Call meeting order and ask clerk to call roll please.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers? Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden? Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Joyner?
Here.
Thank you, do have a quorum present. Mr. Chambers had some business at his business to take care of, but everything's okay and he'll be with us next time. Welcome everybody to the meeting this evening. If you'll stand for the prayer and pledge please. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've divided for us and we always thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. We take for granted the goodness that you do toward us, Lord, and we ask that you forgive us for that and always know that you are doing everything that's in our benefit. Father, we also know that there are losses that we suffer in these times and we ask at this particular time that you be with Ms. Shinholster and Ray family as they go through the loss of her sister. We ask that you would bless them and lead and guide them in the days to come as they go through that grief. The Lord asks that you be with this party tonight as you take up the business of our community and we ask that you would lead us and guide us in the direction you would have us go in that. Do the same thing, Father, for our state and national leaders and always be with those who serve this great country, both domestic and foreign, and we thank you for all that you do and ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the Lord.
Happy United States of America. And the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cancel, entertain a motion for the adoption of the May 14th council meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here and now ask clerk to call the roll please. Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. We move to old business. We'll consider ordinance 004. This is a public hearing to amend the land development code to consider rezoning of 604 South Jefferson Street from SFD to CC. If you will indulge me just a moment, ladies and gentlemen, let me explain how we are going to actually structure this public hearing. Once it's been advertised or been determined that the hearing has been properly advertised, I will read or ask clerk to read the proposed amendment. We will hear the advisory decision of planning and zoning. I'll recognize any person or persons who would like to speak on behalf of the amendment and I will hear from any person or persons who would like to speak in opposition. If there is opposition, you'll be given an opportunity for rebuttal. Like to recognize anyone who would like to testify, but I first ask that you approach the podium, give your name and address to the record. While we encourage everyone an opportunity to speak, like to remind you that time is of the essence and that you keep your comments as brief as possible and remain to the subject of hand. Again, this hearing is to consider the ordinance 014 to amend the land development code to rezon 604 South Jefferson Street. I'd ask the clerk at this point, has the public hearing been correctly posted and advertised?
Yes, sir, it has been.
Would you read the ordinance by caption please?
This is to conduct a public hearing of an ordinance amending the land development code to rezon property located at 604 South Jefferson Street from SFD to CC. This property is currently owned by the estate of Mary F. Stinson.
Thank you, and would you advise the decision of plans on it?
Yes, sir, they voted to approve the recommendation.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we move to the part where we ask for someone to speak in favor of the amendment, I would like to ask our development code enforcement officer, Mervyn Graham, if she would come and have a presentation for us.
Good evening. This property was previously bought before you board a few months ago. It's 604 South Jefferson Street where Mr. Stinson was planning on constructing a building where he wanted to make it into a coffee shop. Now, Mr. Stinson on this application has decided he is going to be using the existing structure, which is on the property, and he would like to rehab it in order to make his coffee shop and that he will not be constructing a new building. And therefore, with it being a pre-existing structure, that is why you have no plans because he is not going to be rebuilding.
Any questions for Ms. Graham, council? Thank you, ma'am. Is anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the amendment?
Good evening. My name is E. Rogers Stinson. I live at 6353 Alderman Drive in Fairfax County, Virginia, and I would like to just briefly support the amendment.
Any questions for Mr. Stinson, council?
Mr. Stinson, just one question out of curiosity. You said you live in Fairfax, Virginia, but you're going to operate a business here. You are planning to have someone else to manage it? Is this going to be a franchise coming in for your coffee shop or?
I will have somebody managing it. It's not a franchise. It would be, as you probably know, I'm from Millisville. I was born and raised in Millisville. I spent a lot of time in Millisville. I have family and friends here, so I'm invested in Millisville. You know, so it will be managed by a manager. I will be the chief executive officer, chief overseeing the total operation.
Who is taking care of the building right now?
I am. I just contracted to have a new roof put on. That will be done probably within the next thirty days or less. I'll have it painted. It will be scraped and painted. Been going through some different color coordinations in terms of what may be, you know, presentable for the community. Once we do that, want to try to make it look good outside and then we'll move inside and start rehabbing the inside.
And you don't have any plans to show us on how you plan on doing the inside?
No.
Anything else, council? Thank you, Mr. Stinson. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the amendment? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
I'm Robbie Haddaway and I live at 191 Marshall Road and I own the adjoining property. And I'm also speaking for Ms. Kane and Ms. Dumas. And I think that Ms. Dunn is going to speak for herself. The residents are opposed to this. This has, there used to be some businesses in the area that were grandfathered in that were somewhat unsightly and now they're gone and this is a residential area and we like it. And in addition to that, I think a lot of people are against this because unfortunately, the property has not been maintained and in fact, the last time Mr. Stinson was here, he had a stack of summonses from the city about getting the grass cut and doing this and doing that. And we just don't feel that he's been a good neighbor. And in fact, I've got pictures here that I'd like for the council to see and these were taken this afternoon. And there's one in particular that's pretty bad that's the people that live in my adjoining property have to look at every day and it's just, you know, and it's been like that. There was an old house there and they had absolutely be forced to remove it. And it was an extreme eyesore and it was an extreme health hazard. And it was, you know, where people could come in, vagrants and that sort of thing and it was just a hazard to the community and he had to be forced to remove that. And also, we had the issue of the fact that what if he gets this zoned and then the coffee shop fails? Well, then the gate has been opened and you could put anything there because it's, at that point, it's zoned commercial. And right now, it's a nice, quiet residential area and we would all like to keep it there. And then another question is something that was just raised is, you know, how effective is management when somebody is trying to manage a business and they're off in Virginia? And I can tell you, I've had businesses here in town and being there all the time is difficult to manage. So we're just, in general, the folks in the neighborhood are against this. And I also am speaking for Tim Wright, who was unable to be here tonight.
Any questions, council? Mr. Haddaway? Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Dunn. I live at 540 South Jefferson Street, which is adjacent to, across the street from the property. And I echo a lot of Mr. Haddaway's sentiments about we having a quiet neighborhood. My concern is, he brought it up, is that, you know, what if the business does not make it? And as everyone is aware, Baldwin County has what, 11.7% unemployment here? Whereas a new business would be a great thing for our community, but just not for our neighborhood. Because once you open that door, as Mr. Haddaway said, if the coffee house does not, and I can't understand, you got McDonald's on the other side of the street. I'm not sure where they're going to pull these people in to come by and have coffee. I really don't understand. I live alone. My husband passed in March and I have to have that concern also. If you have, you know, things, you know, we try to watch out for one another. And I just don't feel like that a business here in our neighborhood would profit the city of Millisville. I really truly don't. And that's all I've got to say about that. I appreciate your time.
Any questions for Ms. Dunn?
Oh, excuse me, I saw this way.
540 South Jefferson Street. My house is on the corner. You've got Scriven Street and then the property is right there.
Did anyone come to your house and ask you how you feel about this place if it were to be?
Dr. Lee, would you use your microphone, please, ma'am?
Thank you. Anyone come to you, come to your home and ask you any questions about how would you feel about having this business here?
No, ma'am. Once I found out that they were thinking about putting a coffee house there, I just thought of, you know, where we're at, you know, and a lot of my neighbors, they live by their cells. You know, I'm not thinking, you know, I'm not saying that Millisville is not a safe town, no. It's that you've got parking. Where are they going to park at? You know, what if it doesn't work? What if you've got an auto mechanic shop to move in there? Then you're going to have cars there, you're going to have people there. I mean, you know, I understand. I just need to see more about how, like I say, a business like that's going to run. You know, well, I think it would be good for the community, any kind of business that comes to Baldwin County is going to be good, any kind. But as far as it being in our neighborhood, I really don't think it's going to work because you've got McDonald's on, you know, just up the street, you know?
I do have one question before she goes to her seat. Were you all able to express your feelings to the planning and zoning commission as well?
I haven't. I'm afraid I am tardy in coming into some of the meetings and I'm sorry about that. I've not been a good citizen. But when, you know, as with circumstances, you know, with my husband passing and everything, it's been kind of hard. But I did make this meeting tonight to let you know how I felt about a business coming into our community.
So what you're really afraid of, just opening up, opening doors up for everything, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir, I am. So what if the business doesn't work? What will happen then? You know, because we have to live here. We have to live in that neighborhood. I'm not planning on moving. And I think if folks is going to have something here, I believe they need to leave here, live here. You know, not manage it from somewhere out of the states. That's what I feel.
Anything else for Ms. Dunn? Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Since there was opposition, Mr. Stinson, you do have the opportunity for rebuttal.
Yes, thanks. I share the individual's concerns. I do consider myself a resident of Millisville. I was born here. I was raised here. I finished school here. I pay taxes here. I probably paid more taxes than some of the members of this city council and some of you sitting in this audience. And let me just read a little statement that I prepared that will sort of give you some flavor to what I'm talking about. Twenty years ago, downtown Millisville was in great disrespare and buildings were empty. Businesses were moving to the north side of town to be close to Walmart. I understood real estate twenty years ago and I understand real estate today. In 1993, I bought an empty, don't-wanna building downtown with a $10,000 down payment, almost all of my savings at the time. I rented that building to two young men who I knew didn't have any money or experience in running a restaurant or any other type of business. They opened a restaurant called The Brick. The young men were Mitch Brooks and Frank Pendergast. And the rest is history. Just ask Frank. Why am I telling you this? Because you need to know that it takes individuals willing to take risks to advance any cause. We can work together and succeed together or we can work apart and fail. I would rather succeed by us working together. I believe in communities too. I believe in safe communities. My family moved to Hall Street when I was one years old. And we've been living there, and I say "we" because I still live at Hall Street for sixty-six years. Okay? So now, in this regard, for what you are talking about and what you are referencing, let's give Millisville some cool names like we had in the past. I remember West End. Okay? The Lees lived and grew up in West End. Newtown. Hemp Brown Bottom. Let's call the south side of town The South Village. Nice name. And let's make it a village, a community, where we can live and work in harmony. And let's call the north side of town The North Village. As mentioned earlier, we already have West End. Let's embrace these names and make these areas unique. And to cut it short, I just want to say that I believe in everything that you believe in. Mr. Haddaway talked about things of the past. What I'm trying to do is improve the property. I'm trying to improve the property and make it better for the community. And I think we can do that. I can do that. I've been paying taxes on this property since my brother passed in 1995 and haven't missed a payment. And that's for every property that I own in Millisville in Baldwin County. So I support Millisville, like, so it supports everything that Millisville supports. And I believe this is a good opportunity. There were and are businesses in this neighborhood now. Mr. Haddaway had businesses in his neighborhood. He ran it out of his home somewhere. You know, so it doesn't make any difference.
You'll have your opportunity in a moment, sir.
So the same principle applies, the same principle. So Mr. Hogan ran a restaurant on the same block for years. And hey, I patronized that restaurant. Same thing for Mr. Smith across the street, who was a good citizen. There's a daycare center right up the street, they have the beauty salon, and I think we need to move to this new concept. Thank you very much.
I want to ask you one question. You are saying that you're a good neighbor and that you have the best interest of Millisville at heart.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Why did you let your property, or that piece of property, get in such disarray? If you care that much about Millisville and you're paying taxes, why didn't you keep it up?
Well, I was working full-time in Virginia. I'm no longer working full-time. I have a lot more time. And to be honest with you, in addition to being responsible for my own household and personal welfare and my family, I'm responsible for everything in Millisville. All of the property, having to pay the taxes, having to have the grass cut, and we have more than one property and there are a lot of them. So it's not an easy task. It's not an easy task for one person. You know, so like the saying goes, it takes a village. It takes a village. And now it's the opportunity and that's what I want to do. And I have some resources and I want to invest these resources in improving it. So the past is the past and if we keep talking about, well, why didn't you do something? That's not going to improve the president in the future. And that's what I want to do at this particular stage, you know? I did all I could, E. Rogers, I mean, you know, one person, trying to manage everything. And it's a lot. And there are a lot of other landowners or individuals who inherited property in Millisville and they are absentee landowners. So they are settled with the same problem. And so it's easy to stand back and criticize or say, why didn't you, or you should have? And what are some solutions? I thought of an idea that the council maybe hadn't considered. Why not assess? I wouldn't mind you assessing an addition of tax to me on my tax, city tax. And then the city contracts on a competitive basis with some of the small businesses in the community and for those properties that have to be cut, they can keep them cut. And now I'm paying. You know, I mean, you're paying additional ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five dollars or whatever you determine to be a reasonable amount.
We already have something on the books. If you don't get it done in a certain amount of time and you get a citation, if you don't get it done in a certain amount of time, the city does cut it and then they bill you for it.
Yeah, but I'm talking about something a little different. Yeah, see, getting those notices, notices after the fact, I'm talking about a situation where it's taken care of in advance and it's done on a routine, regular, continuous basis.
Sir, you don't get a notice unless your property is already not in compliance. That's when you get a notice. It's when you're not in compliance.
I understand, but the point that I'm making is that with what I'm proposing, that would go away completely.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes, sir.
Where you're going is not, as the mayor asked, germane to the subject. But Ms. Walden's question about why you can't do something as simple as maintaining the exterior property, and you listed a lot of reasons and I'm sure they're very valid reasons. But why would we then be compelled to allow you to turn the property that you can't maintain into a business? Do you have an answer for that?
Yes, because I have the resources now to do that. I have the resources and the will and the time. As I mentioned earlier, I was working full-time, you know, forty, fifty, sixty hours a week. You know, so I didn't have the time, you know, I came to Millisville once or twice or three times a year. Well, I've been here three times already within the last two or three months. And that's no problem, you know? So Ray Croft, he didn't live where McDonald's were. Colonel Sanders? Kentucky Fried Chickens everywhere. And you can go right down the line. Chick-fil-A, the founder. If you look at the little structure that they founded, when it was found, it was just a little structure, a little house. And you would say, well, why would somebody open up something like that? Okay? But you have to take chances, you have to take risks, you have to have opportunity. And that's what Millisville has to move to. Because I don't think, right now, it's there. I took the risk downtown. And look what Frank is doing downtown. Because I took the risk with Frank and Mitch. That's all I'm saying.
Anything else, council? Thank you, Mr. Stinson.
Thanks.
Mr. Haddaway?
Mayor Bentley?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a question. I was trying to figure out how many businesses, and I think maybe Ms. Graham may have to answer that, how many commercial businesses are already in that area? Or since we've redone the zoning ordinance?
You might want to come up, you might want to come to the podium, Mervyn, so everybody can hear you. I'm sorry, Mr. Haddaway, I'll be right with you. I'm sorry, Mr. Haddaway, I'll be right with you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Haddaway. I just need to go. Okay. I'd say right next to it, you do have the daycare, which has been there for quite some time. Uh, that would be on this side of Scrivin', across the street from it, basically Jefferson. You've got the daycare here.
No, no, it's up the street, at least the block.
Jefferson, kinda.
Yeah, no, but, but you're talking about Children's Friend.
But, but, yeah.
It's at least the block.
Block, it's right up it, and then there's a, um...
Okay, okay, hey, hey, okay.
I had a picture of everybody, and I didn't know. Okay, I've got the notices right here. Okay. We got Robbie Haddaway, which is right next to it, which is 608. Then we got Timothy Wright, which is 620, those are apartments right there that we Gloria Knowles is the 231 Scrivin', that would be a home, which is the backside of the property. Um, David Pettigrew, they right across the street, it's David Pettigrew, um, and Partners. I think he rents that, they own it, but I think it's a rental home. 619 is Tim Wright, um, they live there, I guess, this is the address, it would be homeowners. Got Jones at 615, but that must be a rental because they don't live there. 540, that is, um, Carpenter and Dunn, Ms. Dunn, sorry. Yeah, and Ms. Dunn is the next one at 210. Then at 220, it's a rental, I'm not really too sure. I think it's a home that's a rental. And, and then on the other side was 130. That is, um, I don't know what that is, what, now it closed down, it, um, it used to be like, I think, a little church there for a while, and it's, yeah, it's vacant now. Yeah, I don't know on what's there. I'm familiar with it enough.
Anything else, Ms. Graham?
That's all from me, that's all I needed to announce.
Thank you, ma'am. Hold on. Use your microphone for me, please.
You say, "How do we change the zoning," right?
Right.
And it's... Ever been no more business established, no retail?
No. What, what is there is grandfathered in, it's been there for years.
Been, uh...
Right.
Okay, Mr. Haddaway?
Kentucky Fried Chicken was mentioned, and, and I'd like to point out that it was on a, a major thoroughfare up there, and went out of business, and another restaurant came in right behind it, went out of business, and this street doesn't have near the traffic, uh, that Albert does. Another thing is that Mr. Stinson wants us to believe that he's gonna be a good neighbor, yet he didn't contact one single person, one resident in this area before he went and did this application to talk to us, none of us, Ms. Dumas, Ms. Dunn, uh, any of us. And then we're, it's already been pointed out that the property's been in disrepair and been an eyesore since 1995. I was out there today, and the ordinance for grass is ten inches. And the grass was up to my knee. Now, I'm pretty short, but I think my knee is farther than ten inches from the ground. And if I was gonna come up before this body and apply to be, uh, have a business there and be a good citizen, I would've had that property shipshape before I ever stepped up here to prove that I was sincere about what I was doing, and y'all have seen the pictures that I took this afternoon. It's pretty disturbing.
Thank you. Ms. Dunn, you have an opportunity for rebuttal.
No, sir, I don't say nothing.
Thank you. Council, anyone else have any questions or statements? Now that concludes the presentation of evidence, now I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to not accept the findings of the P and Z Board and disapprove this request.
It's a motion.
I'll second it because it's a motion.
It's a motion and a second to disapprove or not allow the findings of planning and zoning. Any discussion? Here and now, ask clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Mullins? Aye. Doctor Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I need, I need to explain, I need to explain that a, a yes vote is to disallow the findings of planning and zoning. So if you wanna, if you wanna turn the petition down, then you would vote aye.
My vote is aye.
Would you like to recast? I apologize, that does get a little confusing. Let me, let me start from scratch again, then. All right, I'm gonna start from scratch. Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Doctor Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
That passes, thank you. Next, we have ordinance 007, I'll ask clerk to read in caption, please.
It's the first reading, uh, of an ordinance to adopt a complete streets policy to provide for exceptions to such policy and for other purposes.
Council members, that's the first read on that ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suspend the ruling and approve the ordinance.
Have a motion to suspend the rules and, uh, have a second read on the ordinance tonight.
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend. Any discussion? Here and now, ask clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Doctor Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
That passes, thank you. Move to new business, ask clerk to read ordinance 008 in caption, please.
This is an ordinance to adopt the FY 2014 Annual Operating Budget, and this is the first read of this ordinance.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's the first read of the ordinance, but it's also a public hearing, is anyone would like to speak to this issue? If not, since it's the first read of the ordinance, we will, uh, conduct another public hearing and have a second read at a later date. Next, ask clerk to read Resolution 015 in caption, please.
This authorizes a lease agreement with Rico for a wide-format scanner in the inspections and engineering departments.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here and now, ask clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Doctor Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
That passes, thank you. Council members, we have two license applications to consider this evening. If there's no objection, I'd like to read both of those and vote on both of those at one time. If there is no objection, I'll ask clerk to read both.
This first is for Mayuri Patel, uh, from Mayuri, I can't read that, LLC, Doing Businesses, Discount Tobacco, located at 917 North Columbia Street, and it's for beer and wine retail package to go. And the second one is for Andy Patel versus Akris LLC, Doing Businesses, Gills Beer Growlers, located at 2410 Heritage Plaza Suite A, and it's also for beer and wine.
That's at 2910.
Twenty, okay, 2910, Heritage Plaza Suite A.
I'll entertain a motion on both of those, please.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here and now, ask clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Doctor Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
That passes, thank you. Council members, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session, uh, excuse me, I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda to move into executive session to discuss a legal matter.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend, any discussion? Here and now, ask clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Doctor Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
That passes, thank you. Council members, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session, uh, excuse me, I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda to move into executive session to discuss a legal matter.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend, any discussion? Here and now, ask clerk to call the roll, please. Legal matter? Yes, sir. Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Doctor Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
Thank you, that motion was to amend the agenda, now I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session to discuss a legal matter.
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any opposed? Here and now, we'll move into executive session, ladies and gentlemen, give us a few moments, we'll be back with you shortly. We have an attorney present to keep me out of trouble, so, um, but I will, since we do have a, do have a motion and a second, I'll ask clerk if he'd call a roll, please. Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms., Doctor Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. Ladies and gentlemen, give us a few moments, we'll be back. Call the meeting order and ask clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Doctor Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Joyner?
Here.
Do have a quorum present, no action was taken in our executive session, no further business to come before council, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second, any opposed? Here and now, we are adjourned.